I will call a meeting to order for the city of Apache Junction. The invocation be led by Vice Mayor Rizzi and the pledge will be, I've forgotten who did it last time, so...
I think I did it last time.
Okay. We'll go all over this side.
I don't remember what I had for breakfast this morning.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions that we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. We pray for the safety of all those affected by the fires across our state along with the hotshots and firefighters working tirelessly in these record temperatures. Father, we also ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military and their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. As a reminder to all items under the consent agenda will be approved by one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, requests will be made prior to approval of the consent agenda and be moved to new business. And I'm going to move the recycling of the asphalt to new business. Do I have a motion for the rest of consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be presented and that the agenda item that you asked to be moved be moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Awards and presentations. I have one here, Declaration of July as Parks and Recreation Month of July 2021. Whereas our parks and trails and recreation programs are vital, important to establish and maintaining the quality of life in our city, ensuring the health of all citizens, creating stronger, more vibrant, excuse me, and resilient communities. And whereas parks and trails and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity, increase tourism, and aid in attraction and retention of businesses, and helps reduce crime. And whereas parks and trails and recreation programs are fundamental to the environmental and social well-being of our community. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Apache Junction recognizes the benefit derived from parks, trails, and recreation. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month.[253.73][253.73](applause) Come on up.
Come on up for a picture.
Come on, guys.
We know you all aren't shy.
And they all look at each other to see who's getting it.
I'm not used to being in the limelight.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you, guys.
Squeeze in.
There we are.
Act like you know each other.[283.02][283.02](laughter)
You got it like a TV show.[286.64][286.64](laughter)
Right, see? Women know those things. Yeah. Yeah. Women know those things.[292.64][292.64](laughter)
Someone want to say something?
I do, always.
Okay.[296.83][296.83](laughter)
She's shy.
Yeah.
Just a little bit.
On behalf of our department, we want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. We think that Parks and Recreation Month is every month, but we'll take July, hottest month out of the year. Every park has a history made up of a thousand stories that define it. This July, we're going to tell our story, Apache Junction's Parks and Recreation story. Parks are the center of so many experience and memories, moments that your Parks and Recreation professionals, that's a very small snippet of them, help to make happen. All month long, we'll be using our social media platforms to tell our story of our programs, of our participants, our events, and where we're going. One of our own council members grew up in our programs, and he doesn't really probably know maybe the history of the start of where Parks and Recreation came from right here. So we're going to help tell that story with the help of Matt and Al. This is our story.[381.81][381.81](pause)
I'm Lizel Inian-Bach, Director of Parks and Recreation. Welcome to National Parks and Recreation Month.[396.03][396.03](music) Local trails, parks, and programs are often our first experiences in nature. They're oftentimes our first introduction into our favorite hobbies and sports, and they connect us with important community services. Parks and Recreation is the center of so many experiences and memories, and we are so grateful to be a part of your story. This month, we're telling our story, where we started and where we are going.[434.63][434.63](music)
Parks and Recreation started in 1980 with the hiring of the founding Parks Director, Jeff Bell. Since that time, the department has grown to more than 20 maintained facilities and over 2,000 acres of park and open space land. Our first and largest developed park, Prospector Park, was constructed in 1985 and paved the way for the department to grow and expand.[462.75][462.75](music) We have rodeo grounds complete with an arena that's the home of our annual Lost Judgment Apache Junction has five large parks, pickleball, and tennis courts, and aquatic center, a skate park, a splash pad, community center, and large signature events along with smaller community events. We have sports leagues, fitness and aquatic programs, out-of-school programs, special interest classes, and senior services. Many of our parks, staff, and programs have won national and state awards and honors. And with all of this, we are still not done. Coming in 2022, we hope to have our first dog park completed and are actively looking at expanding to the land the city is annexing south of U.S. 60. Parks and Recreation has employed thousands of staff since hiring its first employee. Many of our team are homegrown. Working as a lifeguard or a recreation leader has been the first job for many members of our community. We are even lucky enough to have current park staff who have spent their entire career with the city of Apache Junction. Our story is not ours alone. We have many partners and remarkable working relationships with those in our community, our local schools, the Superstition Fire and Medical District, local businesses, and the nonprofit agencies we work with are all an important part of what makes Parks and Recreation work. The most important part of our story is our community and the people we serve. To the users of our parks, the participants in our programs, and the attendees of our events, thank you. Watching generation after generation play and grow is what makes our story special.
To learn more about our activities and our events, follow us on our Facebook page, Instagram, and also on our website. We are Parks and Rec, and this is our story.[608.88][608.88](applause)
Thank you. That was great. Regional intergovernment meeting updates from the council. Does anyone have anything that they want? Yes.
I just have the one that last week or the week before last, I was asked to join the Board of Penile Partnership representing the council in place of former councilwoman Barker. So moving forward, our next board meeting will be in September, so I'll be able to report back on that, but then also attending the monthly breakfast that we have, so.
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Al, can you?
So due to the unfortunate fires, the CAG and the part of me has all been postponed, but they are resuming at the end of July here, so I should have a full report in the August meeting.
Okay.
Okay. This is just a report from our last board meeting of the Community Development Corporation. On the screen is a picture of our latest cleanup through the recommendation from Co- Compliance. This was a particular property where the owner did not have the physical or the monetary ability to clean it up, and that's when the Community Development is called in, Community Development Corporation. This particular property had 300 tires on it. We could only take 70 to the recycle center because the rest of them all had rims on them, and unfortunately, they can't take them like this. We had 19 volunteers total. We're not done with this particular project yet. It's going to be ongoing as he dismantles some of the rims, but we're ongoingly cleaning this one up. I brought our T-shirt that we're looking for sponsors for our October Make a Difference Day. It's $200. You can be a business, you can be an individual. From last, the year before's Make a Difference Day, we have given out 300 T-shirts. So that's a lot of volunteers helping clean up the properties here. Make a Difference Day, we've got three projects so far. One is continuation of our cleanup at Silly Mountain Park. At our focal point, some of our bricks did not have a UV-protected paint on them. Our Seroptimus Club is actually going in and repainting over the names with new paint so that they're not faded and all lost. We're also accepting for $50, you can buy a commemorative brick. That's on our website. And also on the website, there's a place where you can volunteer. It's not any set time, it's not any set project, but to have over 300 people that have been helping us clean up the city where normally it would just remain blighted is a pretty remarkable group of people. So please check out the website, and if you can be a sponsor for our T-shirt, please do.
What's the website?
And the website, you can reach by the city's website, and there's a button at the bottom that says Apache Junction Community Development Corporation.
Anyone else? Okay. Al, do you have anything?
I do. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. So we have our announcements for today, July the 6th, 2021. Always a good reminder, as we continue through the summer months, to shop local and make sure that you check out all the wonderful discounts you can get from some of our businesses at ajchamber.com. Okay, couple of submitted announcements from our city council. First is this water drive. With the temperatures, of course, will be reaching 110 this week, we are pleased to inform you that Papa Murphy's Pizza on Apache Trail in the city is partnering with Genesis Project in a water drive to help those affected by the heat. Please bring in a case of water, and you can get $4 off a large pizza, $5 off a family-sized pizza, and you can go and take those to Papa Murphy's, which is on the trail, and Ocatillo just west of Ironwood. First Friday continues, comes back this week, the 9th, as always, Phelps and Apache Trail. I'm sure everybody loves to handle the heat, right? Farmer's Market on Sunday, 8:00 to noon. That comes back also on Phelps and Apache Trail, the East Valley Shopping Center. You can check that out this week as well. A reminder that the Founder's Centennial Committee continues to meet and now are meeting the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at 6:00 PM in the Public Library, which is, of course, right here on Idaho. You can always see Councilmember Brayden Biggs for any additional information. Volunteers needed for the Earth Heart Park Community Garden. Councilmembers Evans and Schroder have been working with Horizon Health and Wellness on the redevelopment, if you will, of the community garden outside the Horizon facility, which is, of course, right here on Superstition Boulevard, just west of the City Hall complex. They are looking for some help. They're going to have their first volunteer coordinating meeting on Saturday morning at 9:00 in the morning, and you can contact LaViere at Horizon to volunteer or to get some more information. That is on the flyer there, but you can probably also go to the Horizon Health website and find some of that as well. And that should do it.
Okay, thank you. City Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Matt Busby, Assistant City Manager, stepping in for Brian Powell, the City Manager this evening. Just a very brief report. I know we showered a lot of love on our great Parks and Rec Department already tonight, but they also accomplished another great feat of an awesome Fourth of July celebration this past Sunday. We've been doing that celebration at the high school football field for decades, right? And want to give our shout out to a great staff that makes that run so well every year. And it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck type situation, so a lot of staff out there making sure it goes well. Along with that, it's the 11th year that Republic Services sponsored the fireworks in that part of the celebration, and so we want to give a big shout out and thank you to them for that sponsorship and that continued sponsorship. And, Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Okay, I'm going to bounce on the Fourth of July show and everything went real smooth, and I want to say thank you to Republic Services, also the Fire Department, and our Police Department, and volunteers that were out there. It really went across very well, and everyone enjoyed. New business in the item that we moved from the consent agenda on the recycling of the asphalt.
You included jokes, didn't you?[1147.51][1147.51](noise)
What do you call a candle surrounded by armor?[1152.42][1152.42](laughter) Nightlight.
Nightlight, okay.[1157.42][1157.42](laughter)
Good play on words. Please don't put pressure on me in the future.[1164.42][1164.42](laughter) That's about the bottom of my jokes. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Shane Kieso, Public Works Manager, so nice to be before you tonight, talk about this subject as well as another subject here tonight, so we'll get the presentation quickly here started.
I'm going to just click F5, and it should go full screen.
Thank you, Matt. So this is something that Public Works does about every five years, is recycle our significant mountain of asphalt that we have at our yard. So if you drive by Public Works located at 575 East Baseline, you'll see that black big pile. So what we're looking to do this next year is to process that waste asphalt and actually crush it so we can make it into aggregate that we use for a lot of our street maintenance projects, as well as shoulder grooming, erosion control that we do throughout the city. So we'll go in a little bit of detail here with this. So we'll talk about those uses in detail. Also on the picture there, I like to put pictures in my presentations of the work that we did this last year, so this is actually showing a lot of that waste asphalt from just a portion of San Marcos that we did a patch to this last spring. And then also a little known fact, that by total percentage, recycled asphalt pavement, which is RAP, the acronym for recycled asphalt, is the most recycled material in the world. You'll oftentimes hear steel is the most recycled, which by tonnage it is, but by total percentage, it is actually RAP. And the City of Apache Junction does a significant job in the recycling of RAP that we do. We use probably over 10,000 tons of recycled asphalt each year when it comes to the maintenance activities that we do. Our cost usually comes down to about $7 or $8 a ton, where if we had to purchase normal spec gravel or ABC, that's upwards to $11, $12 a ton. So you could see, as I just mentioned, about half the cost of gravel. Additional benefits, too, which is significant for Apache Junction, we are in that PM10 dust non-attainment area of metropolitan Phoenix, so RAP over the years has been very critical for us to help stabilize our dirt roads, as well as our shoulders, as well as a lot of our alleys that we still have as dirt. Also, we've been using it a lot for street base material when it comes to patches, and then more recently, in the last five, six years, we've been using it for aggregate, recycled aggregate, in our slurry seal projects, and then this next spring, we're looking to use it actually as our chip seal, in our chip seal aggregate as well. So we're finding, and, you know, being progressive, trying to find more uses all the time with our recycled asphalt that we do have. And this picture is our current pile back there right now, so you can see all those vehicles in the foreground, so, you know, I'm thinking we probably have more than 40,000 tons on the ground right there right now. Like I said, we go through that pile and look to crush more about every four to five years or so, so it'll take us about that long to get through that pile once we do get it crushed. We did successfully have it budgeted in fiscal year '22, so we're just, again, having the time for discussion and presentation tonight with that, but we do have it budgeted. We look to start the crushing operation in the August/September timeframe, which will allow us to get through the operation of crushing and screening in time to do some of those preservation treatments that we'll talk a little bit later tonight with those projects. And that is it, if there's any questions on this.
Okay, do we have any questions? Well, I want to say thank you because one of the comments that we have, or I have addressed, is that when we do the asphalt on the road and removing it, we're taking it out to the dump, and this is to show that, number one, it is being reused, and it's used quite often.
We call it black gold, so any project we have our hands in, we try to get the RAP. Even sometimes we have some contractors that are doing nearby work, actually, give us the RAP, which we could use for our purposes, which is great to be able to do that.
All right.
Matt, I just want to ask a question of you, just kind of informational to educate the public, me and everybody else. What exactly this $308,000, what does that, what do they do by us and does that we can't do? I mean, kind of just run us through it.
Yeah, good question, councilmember. So when it comes to crushing asphalt, of course, asphalt is essentially concrete, so it's a very hard material, and when you crush it and screen it, you have to size it to specific sizes for the application that we need it for. So what that means is a crusher, and a crusher is a very large machine. Oftentimes, it's a million, north of $1 million type of machine. Again, we only use it, we only ask to do this once every five years or so. Also then goes through a crusher, then it goes through a screener, which is almost the size, maybe a little bit smaller, that has a bunch of screets or shakers inside that actually sizes the material and separates the material, and then you'll see, oftentimes see large conveyor belts then that pile it into the different piles depending on its size. So the biggest thing is the capital equipment is huge, especially if we only use it once every five years or so to process the pile.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to get this money approved?
I'll make a motion. If I can find it.
There isn't one.
Oh, there isn't one.
Your Honor?
Wait a minute.
I move that we approve the cooperative contract with City of Scottsdale Number 20 RP016 in an amount not to exceed $308,096 for a service contract as partial fulfillment of the fiscal year's capital improvement and street maintenance plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Oh.[1584.01][1584.01](laughter)
Thank you.
Good job, Al.[1587.01][1587.01](laughter)
Did I get it all?
Motion? Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Presentation on Public Works Fiscal Year 2021/2022 Capital Improvements and Street Maintenance Plan. Continue on.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. Again, my name is Shane Kieso, Public Works Manager. This is a significant topic for me. I've been, you know, Public Works Manager for 18 years or so, and much of that time, I dedicate a lot of my time to street maintenance and improvements of our streets out there. So it's a job that has its very significant challenges, but with that oftentimes comes great rewards. So I find a great, you know, part of my joy of my job is actually being, wearing the hat of pavement manager for our beautiful city. So we'll, I'll begin the presentation here tonight, talking more about the maintenance side. I do have Mr. Weaver, Public Works Director, here also tonight, and he'll talk a little bit more about the CIP projects that we look to do in fiscal year '22, this next fiscal year, along with some of the important design work that we're going to be engaged in performing as well. So first off here tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the street inventory because when it comes to projects, there needs to be a foundation of understanding of how we rate our streets and how we prioritize our streets for the treatments that we do. So we'll take a quick look at that, but tonight we'll then spend most of the time going in to taking a look at some of those specific projects that we have on hand for this fiscal year. Also, I did supply an oversized map for your convenience tonight. The councilmembers calling in tonight, we'll try to get that map to you, but it's a little bit easier to read, and also it's meant to take with you as well, so through the year, through the year, as we bring contracts or agreements forward to start these projects, it'll be your opportunity again to actually consult that map and know what those projects are that are coming forward here as we progress through the fiscal year and implement, move forward these projects here that we're going to talk about here tonight. All right. As I mentioned in my other project, again, I tried to give some pictures of this last fiscal year's maintenance plan. So again, this one is San Marcos, the large patch. This was done by our in-house forces, our in-house equipment, you could see, and crews actually did this patch. Also, this is a great picture, I think, of baseline, a big improvement project for baseline in between Winchester and Tomahawk on the south side of town. Remaining service life, this is a unit of measurement that we use for our roads. We evaluate and do a condition assessment of our streets every year because the condition- We evaluate and do a condition assessment of our streets every year because the condition of streets change very quickly, especially, for example, the more rain we get, oftentimes a lot of segments of streets change very dramatically when it comes to moisture. Moisture is, just like all the streets throughout the United States, our biggest enemy with our streets, a lot of the maintenance we do is to make the streets as impervious as we can to water. However, we do have an additional thing in Arizona that a lot of other states do not have, is the intensity of the sun. So our biggest, second enemy of our streets is the sun. So that's why our preservation treatments that we do, such as slurry seals, chip seals, fog seals, are topical preservations of the streets, which are very important, you know, for us in this state, because when it comes to the sun. So when it comes to RSL, when a street is in very bad shape, like you see in the left picture there, we give it a rating of zero. So baseline had a lot of potholes, a lot of cracking, a lot of edge cracking, a lot of distresses. Everybody knows what a bad road is when it looks at, because more likely you're feeling it as you drive it. When we construct or reconstruct a new road, we give it an RSL of 20, so the scale goes 1 through 20. And we do that for all of our segments of our streets throughout the city, which includes over 450-some lane miles of streets that we have to take care of within the City of Apache Junction. Our level of service goals, or LOS, Level of Service, this is a number that we came up years ago, just to set as a baseline of what we want to strive for when it comes to the maintenance target of our streets. So that is what our goal is. As I mentioned, we rate streets from 1 to 20. So 14 lays in about that good to satisfactory range. That's the target that we have for the average RSL for our inventory of streets. Our average RSL currently is 11.73, that is down from last year, and a little bit down from 2019. Was that expected? Yes, because we put a lot of money towards reconstruction projects. Reconstructions are, projects are about $50 plus a square yard, where if you're doing some preservation and maintenance, like slurry seal, you're talking about $3 a square yard. Big difference. If you have to put more money towards reconstruction, your money goes a lot less distance, and thus less of your square yardage is touched, so thus you could expect that average RSL to actually go down. We did a lot of slurry seal this last year. We hope to do quite a bit of slurry seal and preservation maintenance next year, so I anticipate that number will go back up. We have found out through our history that if we get a RSL around 11 or less than 11, that's where we get the complaints. You'll start getting complaints, you all will start getting complaints. So we found that out through experience, that we want to keep that RSL definitely above that 11, usually around that 12, 13, we're sitting pretty good. Oftentimes, we have the question, we had a state's, a city's sales tax dedication for streets back about six, seven years ago, so the question was at that time, did we have enough money for street maintenance? No, we didn't. Great recession hurt our monies, our herd monies significantly, so our street sales tax has saved us. And currently, we get a little bit more than a million dollars of that street sales tax, so of that 1.6, you could see the majority of that street maintenance comes from that street sales tax. So it is critical, that sales tax is critical to maintain that street maintenance program that we have, to keep us at that 12 or so, right around there, that RSL. Ideally, 2.2 million is what we'd really need to really get closer to that 14 RSL, but where we're sitting right now is a good, comfortable number that I hope we can maintain into the future until our inventory grows. And then, again, now we're talking about different numbers, the more roads we add to our inventory. And the picture there is the fog seal of ironwood, did portions of ironwood this last year. All right, this is the map that I gave you, is a hard copy as well, it's hard to see, but the point is, the more color you see on there, the better. That means we have money for maintenance. There's been periods that I've been here in the city that there was no or very little color on there. So this is a very good thing, that we have a lot of good color. All right, looking specifically at some of the projects, preservation maintenance, as I mentioned, is very significant, especially when it comes to sealing our streets against water, as well as the effects of the sun. We talked about the recycling, asphalt crushing and screening. We look to use a lot of that aggregate as part of that process in our upcoming slurry seals that you just saw on your map. The green lines on your map are the slurry seal projects that will be used, hopefully be used with recycled asphalt. As well, as I mentioned, we're going to be also experimenting with recycled asphalt for our chip seal project as well, which is done by our in-house crews. You can see specific timeframes there for those projects. I just want to add my usual disclaimer. I never tell residents that when exactly, or that their street will be getting done or getting some type of maintenance done. I usually mention to them that we plan to do something. There is so many variables with the plan when it comes to street maintenance. For example, estimates being off and pricing coming in higher than expected, so we have to kick some projects out to the next fiscal year, for example. Also, there's a lot of unforeseen, such as weather, unforeseen when it comes to utility conflicts underneath the ground, et cetera, so there's a lot of variables. So I just caution council members to be careful when you're talking with your constituents about, you know, promising when projects or projects will be done. And then reconstruction, we did start our first phase of Lost Dutchman in between North Apache Trail or SR 88 through the Tomahawk intersection as phase one. I think it turned out great. If you haven't been up there to drive it, I think it turned out really good. I love the bike lanes that we added, just like what we did earlier in the fiscal year down on baseline. We plan a phase two, which will go from where we left off at Tomahawk through the Idaho intersection this next spring, so spring of '22. Also, we have portions of Valley Drive, north of Superstition Boulevard, south of Lost Dutchman, that's in really bad shape, so we hope to do some phasing of a reconstruction of Valley Drive. Also, we have a subdivision of Haven Hollow that has some of the, probably the worst streets in Apache Junction that haven't been touched in a long time, so we hope to get in there to do some reconstruction of the pavement. However, what's been taking so long is we have some drainage issues. Oftentimes, when we get into residential areas, we have to hold up on the pavement to address the drainage first. If you don't, you do the pavement, and then all of a sudden you come back and rip up a lot of pavement when you redo the drainage. And drainage is quite a bit more complicated, takes more engineering, so we are definitely working on some drainage issues with the Haven Hollow before we fully commit and make a big effort to get those streets paved.
Shane?
Yes?
Real quick, before you move on, because I happen to live in Haven Hollow, it looks like two of our streets are getting reconstructed, and two of them are getting new improvements. What is the difference between the two? Because they affect the whole neighborhood, so what?
Good question, council member. The improvement is actually the drainage I talked about. We're looking to put some curb and gutter on those streets on the north side, where we have some of the worst drainage up on the north side. And then if we, when we get in there this year to start paving, more likely we might start from the south to be able to get some time for that curb and gutter to get done on that north side.
So we'll be seeing some curb and gutter then on the north side of Scenic and Virginia, and then the piece of Pinion?
Correct, that is our plan.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I will invite Mr. Weaver up here, because the next slide is some of our new construction, or what we call capital improvement projects, or CIP. He'll run through that. I will definitely stick around if you have more questions as well.
Yeah, Shane, I have a question for you. I know what chip seal and slurry and crack seal is, but what's fog seal? I've never heard that before.
Yeah, fog seal, or oftentimes a seal coat. Seal coat's usually a little bit thicker than a fog seal, and what it is, is just a liquid asphalt. Some fog seals and seal coats have a little bit of a filler in it, not necessarily like sand, like a slurry seal that thick, but just smaller, like even fibers. Shane? Or polymers.
It's the molyte.
So it's very much a liquid, so it's just a very thin layer. And what it does, best thing it does is actually preserve, again, water from getting into those small cracks of the asphalt. Some fog seals actually rejuvenates the existing asphalt on the surface of the street to help it mitigate the effects of aging over time. And then also helps mitigate the raveling, which the sun does. The sun usually eats the pavement from a top down, and that's when the streets end up getting really gravelly and really bony, because a lot of the fines, rock is starting to be worn out due to oxidation due to the sun effects. So in a nutshell, that's the fog seal and the seal.
Well, I figured it was something like that, but I didn't think you captured fog and used it, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I think Mike is right here.
Thanks, Shane. We'll just start with that same area and go to Virginia, Scenic and Pinion. We do have a design done in, prior to me, that was like our Grandview projects, we use our SSP money and our CDBG money on those projects, but my understanding is that income levels or something changed, and we had to move down to the Grandview area. So instead of waiting, we're going to get back up there and finish that project. Promised a few of the residents around there, and it is time to get it done.
Thank you.
We have the design done, but we want to look at a couple of things. I would like to extend the storm sewer, basically at Delaware and Virginia. We have a storm sewer running north-south. I would like to look into running it east and putting some drains in the valley gutter to help some of that runoff that comes from the east. If we can't get it in with the designer, if it becomes too troublesome, we'll just continue with the project and do that ourselves in-house. So anyway, that's, it's on the plan, design this year, construction next fiscal year. Get some glasses. And the project I've had targeted since I drove through here when I was getting ready to do my interview, Delaware from Broadway to 16th. It's, I think it's one of those roads that's probably so dangerous that it's safe. I think people are careful because it's, so we're going to get that fixed. We're going to put a couple dual pipes in there, cover it up, take it to a three-lane with bike lanes on the side, add sidewalk, and Raquel in the office has gone out and got grants, two different grants, split it up, so the price is going to be right. And I was afraid this is one I probably wouldn't get done in my time, but we're going to get, and it looks like fiscal year '24 probably on that, but we'll start the design process this fiscal year. Meridian, baseline signal, that will start. Emile gave me a date today, start August 27th is the start date, and they'll be done by Valentine's Day, they say, anyway. And that'll be the signal on Meridian and baseline, and then they will pave from baseline up to the, basically the concrete up by 60. That is a quarter AJ, a quarter Pinal County, and half Maricopa County, and I believe somewhere in the 2.2 million range. Idaho Road, we will, we are at 95% on the design. It says up here that construction will be summer 2021, and recently sat down with Raquel, we talked about the right of ways a little behind, will probably have it done in time, but we think it's, this is one of those projects that was designed, and we did the estimate a number of years ago. And of course, you know, everything's doubled since then, so we think it's in our, we just think it's a good idea to wait and maybe try to get some closeout money on this project, and we'll do that this, later this year, and then hopefully go to construction in 2022. Same thing goes for Old West Highway, the sidewalks along there from Idaho out to, oh, I always go, Goldfield, thank you. And that project also estimated about the same time, so it's terribly underestimated. And so we'll try to go for closeout on that project as well. So design about completed, and possibly, we're thinking 2022 fiscal year. Winchester's a newer project from Southern down to 29th. Also, another one, a little bit like Delaware, not quite as bad, but have a ditch alongside the road. We would like to do the same thing there, put pipe in, cover that up, hit bike lanes and do that work, and then be able to attach that storm sewer to the work we did north of Southern. Right now, we have storm sewer in, in that section, but no inlets because they won't let us outlet it into this channel until we can guarantee it will work, so. Again, design this year and probably construction, whereas we have probably 23 on that fiscal year. Soro, we'll finish the west side of Soro this year. Thanks to Misty, our thank you to her for helping us on that. And that's one of the projects that DSD takes up to bid, and then we take it from there, so we do appreciate the help on that. And I believe I get pretty long-winded all the time, you know, so I think that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. On our map, I have a, my color code shows two different color greens. Did the ink just come out differently, or did the two different greens mean something different? I didn't catch that on the first.
Oh, like Royal Palm?
First one. The legend shows that there's just one green. I just wanted to be sure.
It's a...
Royal Palm with lighter.
I think it must have been the printer, its intent is just one green.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is, well, thank you, Mike and Shane, for that presentation, very informative. This is more for Matt. Could you please see to it that the hard copy of that map, it gets to my mailbox? I don't know if I can tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely. We have the copies here at your places, and we'll have them in your boxes tonight.
Thank you.
And before I go to, I guess, the picture of Delaware ditch when they were constructing it, if you haven't been by it, it's stout now, it won't hero now, so.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. There's several complaints of what happened before, the wonderful storms that developed and went through that area.
And yes, they are warranted, too.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, no. Just general information, okay. No motion then. Consideration for appointment of Aaron Lasota as presiding magistrate, excuse me, and consideration associated employment agreement. Okay, Matt.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the council went through a rigorous process to solicit potential candidates for the city magistrate position. This doesn't happen or come up too often. It's been nine years, no longer than that, I'm sorry, it's 2009 since...
Previous time.
The former Judge Hazel was hired by the city council. He has since left to take a job elsewhere, and the city council conducted a process of soliciting applications, choosing those who they wanted to interview, and arrived at the conclusion here before you tonight for your consideration. So this is really now your show to take over and make your decision tonight.
Okay, I'm going to make a quick comment in any aspect on it. We did go through a series of interviews, and we all, we had, well, 10 total, we had police and a representative from the city, as well as the council members. And we went through and interviewed everybody, and then we had a wonderful vote afterwards and discussions, and we came up what we believe is being the most qualified and best individual. Any additional comments from the council? Okay, and I hear nothing on the phone, so do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Aaron Doug Lasota be appointed as presiding magistrate, and that the employment agreement for Mr. Lasota be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes, Your Honor, I personally have some reservations. Yes, your honor, I personally have some reservations on this appointment, and with there being other qualified candidates, I will be voting no on this item.
Okay. Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor, six to one.
At this time, would Mr. Lasota come forward and be sworn in, after which time he may want us to say a few words?
Turn around, turn around.
I, Aaron Doug Lasota.
I, Aaron Doug Lasota.
Do solemnly swear that I will administer justice.
Do solemnly swear that I will administer justice.
With that respect to persons and the equal right.
With that respect to persons and the equal right.
To the poor and to the rich.
To the poor and to the rich.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge and perform all the duties.
In public plenary.
In public plenary.
As presiding magistrate for the city of Apache Junction.
As presiding magistrate for the city of Apache Junction.
Under the Constitution of the United States.
Under the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the city of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the city of Arizona.
And ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
And ordinances of the city of Apache Junction.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And withstand all enemies foreign and domestic.
And withstand all enemies foreign and domestic.
So.
Certainly.
I mean, have your signature.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. With me is my son, Renat. My wife is in Europe with her mother and relatives for her annual summer visit, otherwise I would have brought her as well, so I apologize for her not being here. I'm very honored to have been selected to serve as the presiding magistrate for the city of Apache Junction. Thank you for your votes and support of my candidacy for the position. I greatly appreciate the professionalism and fairness that each of you has shown me throughout these proceedings of the application process. I also appreciate the fairness that you have shown me through the contract process. You've been very fair with the terms of employment, and I appreciate your, your final decisions in that regard. Human Resources and the city attorney have been excellent to work with throughout the process, and I look forward to working with them and all city staff members and with all of you in the future. I promise to work hard for you and to treat everyone who appears in court in any capacity with fairness, courtesy, dignity and respect, and to provide, to follow the law and provide justice for all. I will strive to make all of you proud of your decision tonight, and thank you again for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, who don't have any direction to staff, selection of meeting dates and times and locations. Do I have a motion on the next meeting?
Your honor, I move that an executive session at six PM for Monday, July nineteenth, and Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty-one, be held at the city council conference room located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, your honor.
Call of public. I would like to remind everybody that call of public is a courtesy, is not required by law. It is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been filled out and completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in the discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place the matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute timeframe, and I have two.
Hi, my name is Donna Carr, and yes, I am an Apache Junction resident. There's two things that I want to talk about. One is, I remember being told before that there was going to be an all-call for local artists, and I was just wondering what was going on there. For people like me, and you have to spend a lot of money for frames, mats, and to have the prints done, I don't want to waste my time in having it done and then not be able to do anything with them. So I was curious, I was about the all-call to the local artists. Second thing I want to talk about is, I have a neighbor who had this thing for burning trash. Now, I talked to the last fire chief, I've talked to the fire marshal, I don't want to waste their time and have them drive out there, because the minute the guy hears a diesel coming, he hurries up to puts out that fire. And because he's down in easement, he can't see it from the road. So the same neighbor, I think is starting a mobile home park. The neighbor that's one kitty corner behind me, his mom, I don't know what happened to her, but he works for the sheriff's department, and he's actually called the city in regards to the problem with the guy that's back there, and all the trash he has, and all the cargo containers he has, and all the mobile homes, and I said, I said to my neighbor the other day, I said, oh, I said, I think he turned one of the mobile homes sideways so that you can't see into his backyard and see all his stuff? And he says, no, he says he added another one. But he has the tip-outs on them, people are living in them. So just to say, and, I don't know, you might have heard of this guy, he plays loud karaoke. So, and he does that not only on the weekends, periodically during the week. And one of my backdoor neighbors says, I said, wow, it was really loud yesterday. He says, yeah, he put the speakers up on top of his shed to make sure that it was loud enough. So, anyway, if, if I could also please find out about the all-call, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
George Schroder, two four four four, West Virginia Street. Pardon my voice. Ms. Rizzi, Mrs. Rizzi, your empathy sounds like apathy. Obviously, we didn't do what we needed to do, because these people are still on our sidewalks, they're still on our streets. Don't tell them that we can't do something. I know what the law is, okay? You can't kill yourself on our streets, period. A city of our size usually requires about three hundred million dollars per year. Whoa, we get sixty-nine million, and half of it goes to the motorhome parks. Wow. Forget my streets. In forty years, Mr. Weaver, my streets have not been done. Now, Raquel did a show and tell before Delaware, I hope we get to do that. I'm going to see where the drains are going to be put, and how long we're going to be inconvenienced, you know, after waiting forty years. Now, he's, he's telling me two years. I'm not waiting two years. I'm going to do my curb. Somebody got a problem with it? Let me know. I'm doing my curb. Okay? I've waited long enough. Four times, I've wiped out my yard, no, no, no restitution, no, no nothing. And I don't believe in God, so I'm not buying the five-hundred-year or the million-year flood, okay? Not buying it. Fix my streets. I'm not waiting two years. I will get rid of mandamus, and you will fix my streets. Now, at the meeting, work, work session on Saturday, I have a problem with our manager bringing a book from Mesa, telling them how hard they had it, and now how hard we have to have it. It's ridiculous. Who wants to hear about Mesa? I lived here forty years. Nobody wants to hear about Mesa. I mean, no one. We don't want to be Mesa. We're not going to be Mesa. Get it? Got it? Good. Now, we, we got a lot of things to do, and forty percent, fifty percent of our population has gone, six months of the year. Why aren't we making our money and getting it back from so-called mobile home parks? Because they're getting it back. We're not getting it. Our city is worth at least twice or three times the amount of money, sixty-nine million, that we're getting right now. This is ridiculous. Nobody's taking into account these people that come and use up our facilities and then crap on us when they leave. I'm not buying it, okay? You got problems. Our managers are not doing their job. Get used to this. Mr. Powell, you're fired. Mr. Busby, you're fired. Anna, you're fired. Get used to saying it.
Council, you have anything to say?
Your honor?
Yes.
Matt, can we follow up with Ms. Carr regarding, one, her neighbors, and, two, if any, update on the all-call?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Call us meeting adjourned.